All right, good evening, everyone. We will call to order the regular Heath City Council meeting at 6:30 PM on November 12th, 2025. If you had all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts. Yesterday, our nation paused to honor the men and women who have served in our armed forces. We remember their courage, their sacrifice, and the families who stood behind them. Because of this commitment, we're able to gather freely in places like this to meet in peace, to speak our minds, and to begin our meetings with prayer. For that freedom, Lord, we thank you. We also lift up those still serving today here at home and around the world. Keep them safe, give them strength, and let them feel the prayers of a grateful people. Father, we ask for your mercy and peace in places torn by war, in Ukraine, in Israel, in Africa, and wherever innocent lives are caught in conflict. Bring comfort to those who mourn, protection to those in danger, and wisdom to leaders who seek peace. Lord, guide this council as we do the work of serving this community. Grant us clarity, unity, and compassion in every decision we make. May all that is done here tonight bring honor to you and blessing to the people of Heath. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Honor the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, God, indivisible.
God.
Texas. All right, outstanding. We even got some of that stadium echo from the other room. I liked it. I said, man, we're turning this into a concert hall tonight, buddy. All right, we did that for effect. We got a crowd tonight. All right, we will move into Agenda Item Number Two. This is our public comments section. Ms. Gordon, do we have anybody that's signed up?
I believe there are several that are here signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that is signed up not for the public hearing?
Yeah, so for clarity, during the section that we're going to be talking about a public hearing, if you've signed up to the public comments but you plan to speak, that would be in the public hearing section. If you have something that is not necessarily on this agenda scheduled as a public hearing item, then you would be able to speak at this time. Are there any anyone that would like to speak in public comment? Very well. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. All right, moving into Agenda Item Number Three. This is our council, and and tonight we have the honor of having Chelsea Gordon here from the great city of Highland Park. We stole yet another one. So we're very honored to have her here, and you guys say a prayer for Steve and his son. They're they're out hunting. And I've seen him shoot, so say a prayer. Say a prayer.
So am I.
That's right. That's right. I asked him specifically. I said, what are you hunting for? He said, he said, bird. I said, mm, I saw you had a clay shoot. Not so good. All right, very well. Do you have any any comments?
No comments, other than I did want to introduce our acting city attorney and Jennifer Ritchie as well.
Very well. Thank you, Jennifer, for being here. All right, council, at this time, the floor is open. If you have any any comments, Councilwoman Horn?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to say a big thank you to the city of Heath and especially Suzanne Brooks and her team for putting on an amazing event yesterday honoring our veterans. As the wife of a veteran who served 20 years and the mother of three children who are currently serving, it touched my heart that my city cared enough about their service and their sacrifice to do that. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment also.
Councilwoman Myers?
On what Cindy said, I think Suzanne and her team, again, with the events board, did an excellent job, and we can just expand on that for next year.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Thurgood?
I have a comment. I would just like to say a thank you to Rockwall Independent School District for collaborating with the city of Heath in fixing the congestion around Pullen Elementary during drop off and pickup. It has been a significant improvement as we no longer are having parents parking on the road, and it's just been a pleasure to have them engaged and ready to help and assist in that public effort. And so far, so good. We have plans to hopefully ease the traffic around Kane Middle School. And one school at a time, we'll free up our public roads for the safety and convenience of all of our citizens.
Very good. All right. Any other comments, Councilman? None at this time. Very well, we will move into our consent agenda. I believe everybody's had time to review this. 4.8, action regarding the minutes of October 28th, 2025, regular meeting. 4. B, action regarding an interlocal agreement for fire protection services between Rockwall County and the city of Heath. And then 4. C, action regarding an interlocal agreement with Rockwall County for jail services. So at this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2025, regular meeting. Also make a motion to approve the interlock agreement for the fire protection services between Rockwall County and Heath. And lastly, a motion to approve the interlock agreement with Rockwall County for jail services.
Very well, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, I'm going to give that one to Councilwoman Thurgood. Sorry, Mr. Myers. She sits closer to me. All right, so the motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, moving into Agenda Item 5. A, this is where we will conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Heath, Texas for case number ZA 202504, requesting to amend the PD, that is, the Plan Development District Ordinance number 170912A and 230425B, by amending the permitted land uses to allow for the addition of co-working space and an event venue as permitted land uses for the property located at 301 Hubbard Drive, being a .955 per parcel of land situated in the J. Cantor Survey A53, city of Heath, Rockwall, Texas. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. And and before I get started, I did provide you with two documents this evening. The Algiers had provided a presentation that was not in your packet, so this is the current, this is the newer presentation that I received yesterday. And so they will be providing a presentation based on this that you have in front of you this evening. Also, I did provide an email that I received this afternoon from a citizen that I'll need to read into the record. They've requested that we read their statement into the record for for this at the time of the public hearing. With that, this, uh oh, we're, yeah, I'm sorry. This is 301 Hubbard Drive, and and this this is the property that was site planned in 2023. And also, prior to the site plan, we had a ordinance that was approved in 2017, which laid out the land uses that associated with this property. And and as we go into this, the one thing that that the applicant is requesting here is just to amend the land uses for this particular ordinance to allow for a co-working space and an event venue as permitted land uses within the ordinance. And so just wanted to establish this as well. This this is going to be a members-only establishment, and they're invited guests. And with that, this this is an image. I took it off of their their presentation, but this this shows you the layout of the property. This shows you where it is, where it was under construction. It's pretty much finished at this point. The sidewalk's in, the drive is in, the parking spaces are in. But also, just wanted to show you on the right side, these are the elevations that were approved in 2023 for this particular site. And with that being said, we went over the members-only. This is a social club, and it's a co-working environment, and that's the primary use of the property. And and what they what they will be doing here is they will have shared workspaces, private meeting rooms, individual work areas, and they'll also have member events as well. Now, along with the with the membership, this is a BYOB location as well. So and and this is something that the applicant can go into, but essentially, members can bring in their own spirits. If they wish, they could put them in a locker as well, or they can share, and that's what the bottleshare environment is considered. This does not require a permit through the TABC, and and it meets our local ordinances because they are not selling alcohol on this at this location. Now, a couple of things that we have in the ordinance, and essentially, let me say, the ordinance, the ordinance that we have before you tonight supersedes the two ordinances, 2017 ordinance and the 2023 ordinance. And what I mean by that is everything that was established in 2017, which provides all of the land uses in here and all of the other language, as well as 2023, which just established a drive to have one drive with that you that you saw on the site plan. We brought all that in to this ordinance that you have in front of you, and what it does, it provides definitions for the two land uses or the land use that were that's being established by this ordinance. And when this went to P&amp;Z last week, there the the one item that was discussed heavily during the meeting was the event venue. And so the co-working space, you can see how this is defined is specifically for members and the use of the co-working space. The event venue, as we have written in there, as as is located here, that you see here and on in your ordinance, this is what planning and zoning has brought forward to you and is part of their recommendation for this. And how that reads for the event venue and trying to tie this down is a commercial facility entirely enclosed within a building that can be reserved based only on club membership, club membership status to groups of people less than 55 for entertainment, conferences, corporate events, and similar activities. And so that's what P&amp;Z is bringing forward to you as part of their recommendation for the approval of this. The Algiers also part of the events, and they'll go into this, but they'll have private spirit tastings, they have brand tastings, they have private room reservations, and all of these are limited number of people, and that's where the number came in from where we changed that from less than 78 to less than 55. And so just for just for your information, that's where that comes from. Now, once again, as I've indicated, these are the land uses that were established in 2017, and these will continue to be in this particular ordinance should it be approved or not approved, however you decide to move with this. But the only thing that we're adding in here as land use is co-working space and event venue. Everything else will remain the same, and hours of operation are limited from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. As far as public notice, since this is a an amending ordinance, we are required to provide notice in the newspaper. We did that. Staff mailed a total of 26 notices to property owners within 500 feet, and and with that, we posted on the on the city's website, as well as placed a sign on the property. We did receive two notices back that are opposed to the applicant's request, and today I have that email that's in front of you that is for the applicant's request. So there are two that are opposed and one that is against. With that being said, the recommendation from a staff standpoint, we take a look at this, this, the applicant provides a business model that is unique, and its exclusivity as a members-only co-working environment provides limited limited access to the facility and regulated hours of operation. And so with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as I've indicated, is forwarding a recommendation of approval with the amendment to the to the definition that we have in there for event venue, and staff support the co-working space and event venue as well. With that being said, a request to amend the PD is discretionary to the city council. I'm available for any questions that you may have. As as a note, once again, Mr. Mr. McCormick, Tucker McCormick, and Bill Bromley are here this evening to provide you with a presentation on this particular subject, and and they'll be available for questions also.
Very well. At this time, if we could have the applicant come forward, and then we will go back into questions for staff and or the applicant. Very well. If you'd like to take the lecture.
I guess so.
All right. Good evening, members of the council. Appreciate you having us tonight. My name is Bill Bromley. I am a merger, a citizen here in Heath. I live at 2100 Kings Pass in Buffalo Creek. I'm a mergers and acquisition advisor and broker. I've been very instrumental in building businesses from the ground up, advising my clients on building their businesses and exiting their businesses. I do valuations and provide advisory for companies between $1 million and $100 million. I've been instrumental in helping different businesses develop over time and finding their exit. I work within my community, and I'll introduce my partner Tucker here.
Thank you, and thanks for having us. Tucker McCormick, I was founded the Algiers Club in 2023. My background is very deep into spirits. I have two private equity firms that invest in upcoming spirit brands, so more venture capital, as well as hard asset investing in whiskey barrels. And I do a significant amount of education in the spirit space. So I'm executive bourbon steward, which is kind of like a sommelier and whiskey. And, you know, with that, there's just a certain amount of of education that I get to host, as well as bring in some of the brightest minds in the industry, master distillers, master blenders, founders of amazing brands, to showcase what they're doing in an environment that gives them creative flexibility to really highlight the best of what they're what they're doing. And so, you know, I'm really excited to to be here. We've been working with the halls for six or so months with their property to identify that as a place to expand the Algiers and the design district in Dallas into its first expansion. And we're really excited to to be here, so. You already did yours, so. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, just wanted to share, you know, a couple renders. You know, we've been really working very diligently with the halls and and design teams and, you know, just meeting with local contractors and builders to help bring the concept to life. So a big thing is that, you know, we're an exclusive, members-only space and social club that's really designed to more for executive networking than a traditional stodgy kind of regus co-working environment. I think, you know, you're seeing a lot of new spaces that are really built to bring and build community and not just a place to go do work and go home. And so what we're doing, you can see the renders, it's a very warm and high-end exclusive environment. So how it works, in a way, we've had, you know, this kind of stemmed out of two things. One, with bourbon clubs and a variety of things, of guys wanting to get together and just share what they are passionate about and build an environment where everyone can get together and do that without having, you know, excessive fees or, you know, figuring out if you even have, you know, bottles you want to try, anything else. This is just so your wife doesn't get angry at home, have people over, and, you know, a central fun location, but you can also share with people you've never met and, you know, build and develop friendships that go way beyond just, you know, a shared passion. And we've really seen that over the last two years with our 120 members right now. So really, kind of the the key piece in wrapping up is, you know, we have daytime access with co-working, coffee, Wi-Fi, traditional amenities. In the evenings, we usually have education and tastings that our members can participate in for free as just a value add around one of these shared passions and interests that we all have. And a big part is kind of what that bottleshare is, which David started explaining, is we're sharing, you know, these spirits with each other, where we're not trying to, you know, buy and sell alcohol. That's not, you know, a part of this business, but it's really a place where we can show off and and share and, you know, say, hey, I brought this, I want you to enjoy it with me. Let me tell you about it, because I might have gotten it on a trip, you know, somewhere, and now you start hearing the stories and those spirits become alive. And as someone really passionate about it, it's really just opened up the door for, you know, a lot of a lot of unique conversations.
So our facility is membership-based. It does offer a co-working environment. We've got boardrooms, event spaces, so that you can have a event for either your employees or colleagues and give them a place to entertain or to do small seminars, you know, six to 12 people at a time. One of the things we do add are these different tasting events for for them, so that it's a place for them to go and offer them something different and unique within that co-working environment. We work with local partnerships with these tasting events. 100% of the money is donated back to the community, to different events and different organizations, so we feel that, you know, we're very philanthropic in our approach to where these proceeds go. And we, you know, we offer different amenities like coffee bars in the morning, so for a local meetup place where you can have more of a exclusive private place to meet that's not so out in the public if you're having, you know, more private type meetings. Brand tastings, once again, is what Tucker said he does, so we're able, you know, through his access through his private equity firms, we're able to bring in different distillers and different coffee companies and and just provide a different experience, something unique and unlike something other co-working and office spaces are able to provide. And once again, you can, you know, our members can rent the facility to to do private events for themselves, and it's very electronically focused to where they're able to broadcast their presentations and just have a private space for for their personal events.
Yeah, and so, you know, with the, you know, kind of private spirit tastings, I do a lot of these, which is a great way for, like you were saying, giving back to the community. So I've donated probably 20 to 30 of these private tastings to various charities. My capital partner and business partner in the Dallas location owns Hero's Ranch, which is a disabled veteran hunting and fishing ranch out in Quitman, Texas, that just allows them ADA-accessible access to all the things that they used to do before they might have lost, you know, limbs. And so we do very heavy in the veteran charity space, predominantly through these private tastings. And so just kind of moving on, and I'll get back to some of those and how we're going to be using that, but just kind of showing, one of the new co-working spaces that just landed in Dallas is called Switchyard. It's very much, they call it a work club, so right, like kind of saying, it's not a traditional white box office. It's really an open community cafe oriented, but still private membership access with, you know, happy hours, lunch and learns. And we're doing a lunch and learn with one of our members who's one of the experts in JFK's assassination. So he's going to talk about that on Friday, and it's going to be, he's already done one, and they're super interesting, and everyone, I think it lasted two and a half hours because everyone just kept having kept having questions. So being able to do things that aren't just associated with spirits, but, you know, really shared interest and members are sharing what they're passionate about with each other as well, which I think is really, really exciting. So you've already seen this, but I think just one one point to note here is through with the business model that we've been building and how memberships are taxable, the sales tax that we're looking to be able to bring into the city of Heath is roughly $400,000 over five years of operations. So we believe this will be a very strong benefit, not only to building up the community and businesses that they're working on with the private space, but also improving the city through through the tax revenues as well.
So currently, the the land uses for commercial space, there can be restaurants, alcohol, et cetera. We're asking simply for the event space with this and the co-working space, which we see in many communities, but we don't feel we have any in this community, and that's why we think it'll be a value add for our community, a good centralized place for business professionals to meet up, have a place to congregate, have those private meetings, and just essentially just have something private for themselves that's exclusive.
I think, you know, with the P&amp;Z hearing and having gone through, being able to talk with with everybody about this, I think there's a couple of things that we really want to prioritize within this definition, because event venue can seem very broad and also, you know, disruptive to the neighborhood. And what we want to really show is that there's three key elements to this definition that David and the city helped us define what event venue is. And one, there, you know, these tastings and stuff are going to be enclosed within the building. This isn't for the, you know, nearly one acre property to have a, you know, giant concert or wedding or anything else. I'm not in the event business. I'm not renting out the space. It's reservable rooms, both a conference room and a small upstairs room, which I'll show you the floor plans of. But this is reservation based only with members to invite, you know, if you want to celebrate your birthday and have, you know, or have a business meeting, all of those can be used. And then we've brought down the the use to 55 people instead of total occupancy of of 78. And so the other kind of piece is that because it is already zoned with commercial, just ensuring that a restaurant could also be a tenant, you know, we're looking for at a lease, so we're working with the halls and building this out, but we're leasing this from them, and they could easily bring in a restaurant who can use the whole space for any anything that could go outside as well. So we wanted to be very cognizant of us being so close to a neighborhood within our work and definition of this. I think we can kind of go by. So I I think, you know, what's what we want to do is really show you what we're bringing. And, you know, we've been working with some amazing interior decorators who helped me in my first location, as well as develop some renders, and so this is kind of the the lookbook she created. And I'm not even going to pretend to pronounce that, but and then looking at also what the the halls had already kind of built within the social hall concept with, you know, downstairs, upstairs space for cafes, you know, small restaurant catering events, you know, libraries, and, you know, there, we're really utilizing the space in very similar ways. This isn't a big, you know, rowdy bar. This is very much a connoisseur's location. So from some of the concepts, these are renders that we developed this summer. So, you know, high-end furniture, we're having kind of a dark farmhouse, you know, interior, there, you know, we do international trips as well to Scotland, so you'll see a little bit of tweed and Scottish vibes going on. My last name is McCormick, so I got a little bit of that in there. And so we'll have a 10 to 12 person, you know, expandable, you know, dining table, conference room table that, you know, will also be reservable as well. And just to kind of take the top-down approach, the downstairs space, which is the larger left-hand space, you know, we have kind of the coffee bar and and bottleshare area, a lot of open seating, you know, as well as banquets with where you can open up your laptop and and work and transition into, you know, cocktails and and, you know, pours with friends. Upstairs, you can see a conference room, and this is the two event areas. So on the right-hand side, I just kind of broke those out, so you can see how, you know, the conference room with kind of a 10-person table that can host, you know, private tastings, as well as the upstairs room, which has roughly 13 seats. We can have about 20 people that can be reserved for a private space. So these aren't major, large gatherings, and it also doesn't disrupt members who are using the space downstairs through the normal use of their of their enjoyment of of this space. One thing, if you've, now that you've heard me talk a little bit, I don't think my voice is super loud, so I typically will have low music that, you know, is Frank Sinatra-like, that I can have a normal conversation. I'm not yelling over things. That's not what I want, and I'm not going to, you know, be a part of, you know, any of those spaces that were, you know, I'm not going to enjoy as well. So you've already seen the outside, and this is the just approved deal where the the parking lot has now been completed. We're not changing any of the major interior walls, anything like that. We're working within the plans. So all of our finish out will be, you know, painting and and things like that within the space that's already been fully, you know, permitted, and so we'll just do the finishing touches with working with the halls for finishing out their property.
All right. Any questions?
All right, very well. Thank you. At this time, council, do you have any questions for the applicant, and then we'll bring staff back up?
I do. So can you describe to me with the outside, how a typical evening at your venue would look outside? look outside? Will, will there be music played outside? And kind of what that looks like?
Most of everything we do is contained to the inside of the building. Maybe on nicer nights, there might be an outdoor area for seating, you know, for casual conversation. But there will be no speakers outside. There'll be no live bands. There'll be no large events, festivities, activities. It's a very professional environment and it's more of a place just to converse, relax and get away than it is putting, putting on a big event or any, or any type of event for that matter.
Okay, thank you. The, the only other question I have is you mentioned, you know, gentlemen, is this club open to women? Is it open to everyone?
Absolutely. Nope. It's definitely a co-ed facility.
Okay, just curious.
No, we think it's a great question.
Just said gentlemen, so I just want to make sure.
We've actually gone to length to have a women's restroom with high-end amenities and nice vanity mirrors and a very comfortable space there. Or actually, we're working to do a big push to include the ladies of our community to also have their business events there. We do know predominantly a lot of these types of clubs are men-only type clubs. But we are, will actually put a larger push towards including the wonderful ladies of our community and society to be a part of this, as they too do business and need a place to get away.
And we have done, you know, wine nights where we can bring wine brands in to also showcase our tea nights. You know, we're having high teas. We're working on with some tea vendors. So there's a whole variety of things. And the, the community currently is, when they ask for something, we really work to ensure that, you know, if they're making an introduction to somebody that they really like, that they want to be able to showcase to their friends and family from, you know, wherever they've been traveling, we really work to try to incorporate that within any kind of activities that are offered to members.
And we do employ high-end mixologists as well. So any kind of amazing drink that you could ever ask for, we think that'll accommodate the women very nicely.
Okay. And then the, the other question I have, can you tell me again what you said your membership was in Dallas?
So we're actually about the same square footage. We'll cap out between two and 250 people. So I have about 120 right now. And so, you know, any given night, we can have five to 30 people come through. So, you know, we kind of expect 10 to 15% of the membership to be in attendance at any time. And the nice part about the layout of the, you know, they got, we have 27 parking spots. And usually with, with couples or friends, they'll be coming together as well. So we don't have real, any, any major activity that has full capacity for us, you know, with 120 people. And we don't expect it to be there. That's just kind of our, you know, we don't want it to be too full because it removes the enjoyment of, you know, noise and just being crowded. You know, it kind of takes away from the environment.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Mars?
Could you explain a little bit about your sales tax revenue, how you're saying you could generate that kind of funds in five years?
I mean, all memberships will be, are taxed with sales tax due to the social membership. So both initiation and monthly dues are in that category.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was something we had actually chose to do for the benefit of the city because some, a lot of times memberships aren't taxable, but we chose to make that as part of the membership.
In co-working, yes.
Very good. Any other questions, counsel?
No.
None? What is the, what is the length of proposed lease?
Currently, we have a three-year lease with a three-year option.
We have two three-year additions.
Yeah, two three-year, two three-year options, correct.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
At this time, Mr. Gonzalez, you take the lectern. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? But before I open the floor, one point of note, as I was looking through this, and just, just so we have a point of reference, and then after this section of questions, we'll go into a, a public hearing. So, so this space is a PD. And so for anybody in the room, you know, might have been around during this time, I recall when this PD was done, I was actually in the audience. It was, it was discussed because I believe we had a wine store at the end, right next to Pablo's, and they were planning to turn that into a, into a wine room where they were going to do just the same or similar to this, maybe minus the membership deal. And so I, I actually got to watch those meetings and kind of the things that they deliberated on. The one question that I had, though, as I'm looking at this, and anytime you go back in and you open up a, a planned development, you know, there's, there's always concerns, right? And especially if, if you didn't know the original intent of that PD and so on and so forth. This is local retail. Typically, what I would assume we would be doing is where it would be a conditional use permit. So is there a reason that, you know, we didn't, we didn't set this up to where, hey, we're going to do a conditional use permit under local retail? It's, it's basically, you're seeing that we're missing a land use inside of this PD. And so you're trying to define this entity, right? You're trying to define them as something specific because they don't fit into the restaurant bucket and they don't really fit into the retail store bucket. Is that correct?
Right. Yes, sir. That, that is correct. And typically what you see in a planned development, what that does, that allows the council to be able to take a look at a land use to see if that is appropriate for a particular area. And if it's not defined in our land uses that we currently have, to go back to your, to your question concerning the CUP, you have to have an established land use in order to, according to our ordinance, in order to put forward a conditional use permit. This, we do have office use in this PD, but what staff had taken a look at and discussed was, this is not traditional office. And so what we want to do is to make sure that we're defining exactly what the particular land use is here, which is not identified as a CUP. And that way, we could put that in as a co-working space and event venue, tagging those together to have a, one land use, so to speak, tied into this particular ordinance. But...
Very well. So, so my point being there, right, is, is that we have a similar style membership. We'll go back to 1959. We have Rush Creek Yacht Club. So that's a member-based organization. They, they also have social memberships where you can have access to their, their restaurant, their bar, their pool, right? But those are not identified in our local retail ordinance. So essentially, what, what I'm making sure that everybody's aware of is, is that whenever it's inside of your local retail designation, but if you can't define, you can't define every business. And so if you actually read the LR, it's like these macro buckets. And so you get into something like this, my assumption is you would just do a PD, you, you, you open up the PD, you would list it, it would be a conditional use permit. But since it doesn't go back, all the way back to your, your land use, there's nothing to back it up. So therefore, that's why planning and zoning is now sat here and said, okay, we got to figure out how this is even defined. And then there are secondary definitions to what this event venue is because obviously the concern is maybe not necessarily today, right? The, the concern, anytime that you go into a planned development, and this is why I always recommend a conditional use permit, is because when that land lease is up and you now have a new tenant, you know, they have to come back and they have to essentially showcase that conditional use permit and ask for permission for their specific business, even if it's in a bucket that's listed. So I just want to be very clear, in the future, we need to look for these opportunities within our ordinances, much like we've done with our, with our development ordinances, our open space ordinance. We need to probably look at these land uses and say, hey, where, where are we vulnerable to make sure that we've got these things buttoned up so we can, so we can then protect ourselves in a PD, right?
Yeah.
Because you're going to open it up and we're, and we're going to make a decision today. I like what the P and Z has done by trying to define this, but I would say the city or, and/or the citizens would be more protected if it's a CUP.
Understood, understood.
All right. So with that being said, at this time, counsel, the floor is open for any questions of staff. Councilman?
So, so I do have a question, kind of along those lines. If, when we classify this as an event venue, the definition that is provided that you gave us this evening, no more than 55 people and all the specifics around that, that would, that would be applied to any future use of this property? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And, and the, the use would have to be a members-only use as we have defined in here to kind of tighten that up as well. That way, it doesn't allow it to be like what some folks refer to as a banquet facility or a wedding venue. Those would, would be prohibited. That was...
So that's how, that's the mechanism they're using, but that's why I was referencing the CUP. Since you don't have that mechanism, which I believe would need to be standard, but that's a legal conversation we can all have internally. But again, they're trying to button this thing up because of that, because it does live on in the PD.
Good. Yeah. And I just want to make sure that the public understands that and that we understand that there are specific, it, it's not just an event venue. Somebody can't come in and do a concert there at some point. So, that's really important. Thank you for that clarification.
Good. Other questions, counsel?
I do. Mr. Gonzalez, on the teleends of public understanding, the notices went out to the residents around, remind me and the ones listening, how, what's the span around this location that they, that the letters go out?
Okay. So our, our ordinance requires a 200-foot radius, but policy-wise, from the city standpoint, we want to make sure that everybody is involved within that. So we actually expand out further than 200 feet, which is the state requirement. So we go out 500 feet for notices. And of the 500-foot radius beyond the property boundary, that's how we capture 26 properties. And, and so the, of the 26 properties that we have that we physically mailed a notice, then that, they have the ability to be able to respond whether they're opposed or whether they're for this as well. And so with that, we did receive the, the notes that you have in your packet.
Okay. And, and just for clarification, I, I see one in the packet, but I think you mentioned that we had two that were opposed. I didn't see that. I just want to clarify that, that out of all that you sent, we had two respond, not four.
Right, yes. Two, two in your packet are opposed. One included a letter, I think it was about three or four page letter, that, that we read into the record last week. And, and the one that I received today was via email. They're not in this area, but they're in the city. And so they can, they can respond to that as well, too. And so they responded favorably in that one.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would also like to point out, too, and I, and I typically, for those that haven't been to the meetings, I always like to give a lot of clarity and make sure that everybody understands different ordinances and how they impact. Because a lot of times when we get here, we get very siloed and singular. But when we do look at noise, I want everybody to know that the city does have a noise ordinance. So to be clear, the city does have regulations behind noise, and it is very vague, meaning it's in the benefit of the residents.
That is correct.
Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, sir. Yes. So our noise ordinance, and you can locate it under chapter 97 in our code of ordinances, and it does regulate noise in, in the, in the respect that if you feel like there's any noise, whether it's this property or any property anywhere in the city, certainly give a call to our police department. They're able to respond to any of those and certainly want to make sure that, that no one is disturbed by anything in that respect. So...
That's correct. Nuisance is very much broad.
Correct.
And it is, and again, I was around during those times of, of noise ordinances. And so there was major concern when standard service was, was putting in a live music venue and you have a neighborhood right directly behind it. And so that's when I believe that ordinance was, was last updated. And again, it was very much written in a way to be vague, to protect the citizens. So then that way, they could get reprieved when necessary of a nuisance. So just be mindful, there are mechanisms outside of a PD. There are other ordinances that do regulate your quality of life and do assist you. So, okay? Very good. Any other questions for staff? Very well. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, we will conduct our public hearing at 7:13. If you would like to speak for or against, please raise your hand and you can take the lectern. Anybody that would like to speak for or against? Very well. Yes, sir. If you'd like to take the lectern, state your name and your address.
Yes, sir.
And then just keep in mind, we do try to limit these to three minutes. I don't think I've ever cut anybody off. I think the longest...
I was telling you, 60 seconds.
Yeah, perfect.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilperson. My name is Sean Demoe. I'm coming over from Faith, so I'm at 149 Hampton Drive. I've had the opportunity to go to the Algiers in Dallas. I will say that it was a, a great opportunity, great, great experience. They allowed me to go through the different rooms and see what they had available, from a little bit of tasting, a little bit of class and a little bit of lecture, you know, kind of taught me a little bit about some different whiskeys or, or different things, spirits that they had there. But going through the different rooms and stuff, I'll say that 100%, it was very elegant, very, it was small. It was very, it was not loud. It was a great place that I think I could see easily inviting some friends over if it was local. I would definitely see myself going. I think it'd be a great opportunity for the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. I saw another hand. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm in my ear.
Yes, sir, if you would, please state your name and your address.
I'm Alan Villard. I live in Faith, 531 Pleasant Hill. And I have to go to Dallas and stuff for meetings. And I try to meet people halfway through with the traffic, the congestion. This makes a great, a great point to have a place like this and to bring them more money. And I know there's a lot of people in Faith are looking for places like this. And with the reputation that the city of Heath has, everyone wants to come here for one reason or another. And this is just another one to get them to bring their money. So I'm in on this.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir, in the back. Kevin, I got you as last.
Yeah.
Just kidding, just kidding. Best for last.
Hi, guys. My name is Jason Ducharme. I live at 2906 Preston Trail in Rockwall. I've spent the last 20 years in hospitality and food and beverage. I don't know how many of you consume or imbibe upon spirits or beer, but I've probably made a fair amount of the stuff that you guys have ingested. It is my passion. And it's really, really, really amazing to see that there is going to be a place down the road from where I live to celebrate what artisans like myself have worked so long and so hard to create for people to enjoy. And to do so, that makes us all excited because there's one thing to go from point A to point B, but to do it in a nice Rolls Royce, baby, that ain't bad. And really, really excited for it. So thank you guys very much.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Philip B. I live at 517 Shadowwood here in Heath. I want to attest and affirm that this isn't a unproven business model. I know Tucker personally, his business capital ventures are the gentleman that's helping back this whole scenario. He was a personal friend of mine for many years. We're both in the mortgage industry. I've been a member of Algiers in Dallas for almost a year now. And it isn't a, you know, Baja party central scenario. It is very eclectic. It is a great networking space. I recently opened up my own local business about a year ago, have founded probably two or three large business deals there, building the Rockwall and Heath community in doing so. And to just put into perspective, it's very enjoyable to have something that isn't a bar environment. It isn't loud. I think this would be a great addition, not only to Heath, but to Rockwall in general. And again, these two gentlemen aren't fly-by-the-night individuals. It's not a, a concept that they're trying to get done. It's, it's working now and I'd love to have that in our backyard.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now you go.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Kevin Haddai, well, not, I'm just myself. I live in Rockwall. I live on the lake in Rockwall. And I will tell you is that I was a member of Co-create. If anybody remembers Co-create here in Rockwall. I was happy to pay my money every month to be able to have meetings and Co-create. I enjoyed their meeting, their venue, the professional environment that was part of it. And when they, when the owners of the building decided to fill in their spot and shut down Co-create, my first response was pleased or god, somebody in Rockwall County opened up a WeWork-type facility for the purpose of people like myself who are able to meet with people in a business environment. As much as I wouldn't enjoy meeting with my clients at standard service and having my little, my little bowls of food and everything, I really sometimes just need a business environment. And I'm tired of paying $600 for a two-hour meeting at Chandler's Landing. I would really enjoy to like to have something, even though I don't live in Heath, I will drive her every day to be a member of this club for the sole purpose of spending my tax dollars here in Rockwall. First of all, the Tom Thumb and the standard service takes at least 60% of my tax dollars in Rockwall County. But I will tell you is the fact that for this opportunity to be in Heath, I'm jealous that it's not in Rockwall. I would enjoy to be in Rockwall. If you guys do not approve it, I hope and pray we take that house and we move it to Rockwall somewhere, because I desperately need a place to meet with my business owners, with my clients, to be... with my clients, to be able to in a professional environment, not in one that's some crazy environment, but just one that allows me to be able to conduct business in a professional setting, in an organized environment, in a safe city that is Heath. And I would 100% enjoy being the very first member of this club the second that this is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, in the back?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kane Pierce. I'm a resident of Rockwall at 545 Granite Fields Drive. And of course, Kevin stole my punchline. Um, I, I am the current vice chair and incoming chair of the Rockwall Economic Development Corporation, and, uh, that's exactly what I was going to say. If this, uh, wasn't coming in Heath, I'd want this to be in Rockwall. I won't belabor the point that it's obviously going to be a high-end, very nice facility. It won't be a nuisance to the neighbors. I'm very supportive of this. And again, just a little jealous, it's not going to be in Rockwall. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Saw another hand back there? Yes, ma'am.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Chandler Tameko. I live, uh, I'm not going to give you all my home address, but I live in Fornie. I figured y'all should hear from a lady, uh, because you had very valid questions. I work at the Dallas location. I currently manage, but I started off making everybody very, very lovely drinks. I think for me, what's really, really neat about the space is the level of education that happens. Yes, people sip on spirits, but it is my job to keep everybody in check. No one gets rowdy because I don't allow it. We keep it quiet because I like to be able to hear myself talk. Um, but I really love the storytelling that happens at the space. I really love the education that happens at the space. And the unique community that is being built there is very special. I would also like for my commute not to be an hour into Dallas. So, please let him do this here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You see another hand? Yes, sir. Mr. Burrows?
Hey, there. My name is Don Burrows, council members, mayor. I'm the new guy to Heath. I live at 226, uh, Bristol Court in Stone Lee. I don't drink alcohol, okay? Um, but this is an incredible opportunity. As an entrepreneur that has started three businesses in Heath in the last three years, I love 5013 Coffee. I see you there often. But there's many places or many times, like Kevin said, that we need some privacy to get deals done, to get entrepreneurs together, to get business owners together. It's been a lonely three years. Why? Because there's no place for us to all get together, those of us that are like-minded, those of us that want to see Heath prosper, those of us that want to build business here. It has been a lonely three years. And I would love for this opportunity to open up so that we can talk about Heath, we can bring more business to Heath, we can, can make our businesses flourish, just like Kevin said. I ask you guys, please approve this. We need this so bad in this community. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, sir. See another hand? Yes, sir.
I think I'd be the only one with, uh, notes up here. I promise I'll keep it under three minutes. Uh, Jeremy Jones, uh, 618 Race Drive, right across street, Heath Golf and Knock Club. Um, for the past 12 years, I've worked in the hospitality and membership industry, both full-time consulting and helping design, uh, open, private, and social clubs. And I'm basically copycatting what everyone is saying tonight, but the past 12 years, that's exactly what I've seen. Today's clubs, today's social clubs, bring together entrepreneurs, educators, neighbors, and even local leaders, people looking for a comfortable place to relax, share good conversation, and be around those who appreciate the same things in life. In a world where so many of us today, I know me, working home at remote, after meeting, after meeting, after meeting over a computer, it feels so good to turn that computer off and go have a real-life conversation at a club. And that's exactly what this is. I've seen incredible things happen inside these four walls the past 12 years. Businesses literally being launched on napkin sketches, nonprofits being bored out of shared passions, and even member events, at member events, members meeting, getting married and starting a family. At the heart, it's not about the cigars, it's not about the bourbon, it's not about the status, it's about the belonging. And it's about the friendship shared and the experiences that we people together to make this community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hicks?
Mayor, uh, city council, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jeff Hicks. I live at 2121 Kings Pass in Heath. Uh, I'm a local business operator as well as an entrepreneur. My wife and I fully support the idea of Algiers. It gives us an opportunity to have a high-end office space that we currently don't have access to. Our small businesses and LLCs operate in, I mean, I had a meeting with the mayor of Rockwall this week at Panera. I would much rather have taken him to Algiers.
Bring the mayor of Rockwall to his venue.
We, we love the idea of this, of this place, the collaboration that can happen here. Uh, you know, currently, we go across the bridge to a couple of different places to, to try to support our LLCs. And this gives us a place and home, keeps our tax dollars here, and gives us an opportunity to have an amazing, uh, business here locally run by local members. And I can't imagine you saying no to this, so please say yes.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other hands? For or against? Any residents that would like to speak for or against? Before we read that into the record, any other residents, for or against? Whole lot of for, where are they against? Okay, very well. Mr. Gonzalez, if we'd read this into the record?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, mayor. And, uh, this is from, uh, Eileen Omara at 1 Chilton Point. And she writes, "I am in support of case number ZA 202504 regarding proposed amendment to the plan development district, ordinance numbers 170912A and 230425B to include co-working space and an event venue as permitted land uses for the property located 301 Hubbard Drive, Heath, Texas. The proposed event venue and co-working space would bring much-needed amenities to Heath, allowing residents to gather, work, and celebrate locally rather than traveling to towns outside of Heath that currently offer such options. This project supports city's, uh, vision of being a premier community by providing spaces that foster connection, creativity, and convenience for families, professionals, and local organizations alike. By expanding opportunities within Heath, the city strengthens its economic base and enhances overhaul, overall quality of life. The thoughtful growth, uh, keeps activity and spending within the community, supports small businesses, and ensures Heath continues to thrive as a well-rounded, self-sustaining city that meets the needs of its, uh, residents." Thank you for your time and, uh, for including the statement in the record of tonight's meeting. Please let me know if you have any additional information.
Very well. Thank you. That's been read into the meeting. Uh, if there are no other, uh, for or against, going once, twice, very well, this public hearing is closed at 7:27. Uh, at this time, counsel, uh, are there any further discussion or questions that you may have on this item? If there are no further questions or discussions on this item, uh, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion?
A motion to approve case number ZA 2025-04, amending the permitted land use to allow for the addition of co-working space and an event venue as permitted land uses for the property located 301 Hubbard Drive.
Very well, we have a motion on the floor to approve, as stated, uh, to include the definitions of these, uh, items. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Myers. The motion moves. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. All right, very well. Congratulations. Moving into agenda item 5.B., this is discussion in action regarding case number PP202502 for the approval of a preliminary plat for the Vaquero addition, being a 11.057 acre tract of land situated in the East Teal survey, abstract number 207, and zone PD, planned development for LR, local retail land uses, and generally situated at the southwest corner of the, uh, intersection of Lawrence Drive and Heath Hawk Drive, City of Heath, Rockwall County. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, mayor and counsel. And, uh, this is a property you're, you're familiar with. Uh, they are coming forward, uh, for, the applicant's coming forward to request a preliminary plat, just for a commercial development that will contain nine, uh, lots, uh, that will be for development. Uh, this is right across from, uh, the Heath, uh, Heath Hawk High School and is located on Heath Hawk Drive. Um, and the applicant is, has revised the location of the 10-foot sidewalk to be located within the right-of-way, and this is one of the topics that was talked about at the, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, so this is, this is the plat, the preliminary plat that's coming before you tonight, shows the, uh, shows the properties, how they're subdivided out. Uh, and then, as you know, uh, lot one will come back to you, uh, for a development plan and a CUP, CUP for a drive-through. Uh, but, uh, this plat meets all the technical requirements for a preliminary plat. Uh, and also with the preliminary plat, uh, we do have a landscape plan, uh, that comes before you as well. Uh, this shows you the total amount of inches that are going to be removed from the site. And, uh, did I say tree scape plan, I think is what I meant to say. Uh, so you have 284 inches that are being removed, uh, from the site. That's 24 trees that total 284 inches. Those are cedars, hackberry, elms, bodarks. And, uh, and the total inch to be planted, uh, they are planting more than, than what's required, so they're planting 137, uh, trees that are three inches, uh, in size. And, uh, that'd be bald cypress, magnolia, and chickpea oak as well. Uh, there are 79 trees that are preserved. Those are going to be along Heath Hawk Drive. Uh, and so with that being said, mitigation is satisfied with them, uh, providing the additional trees, uh, to be located. That, now, that plan will come to you as far as the landscape plan during the site plan phase or the developments, uh, plan phase of that. So, we'll see that as it comes forward to you. Uh, with that, um, one thing that staff wanted to point out and just bring forward to you was the traffic impact analysis. Now, I did speak to the applicant earlier today, and I know, uh, that, that's been requested of the applicant to provide a traffic impact analysis. Uh, and so what staff wanted to just point out, because, because of another case that we have that was conditioned to bring in a traffic study, uh, is we wanted to point to something that was in a local, local government code, uh, that pretty much says that the city cannot require TIA or traffic studies part of the approval of the plat. So, I just wanted to bring that forward, but let you know the applicant is working on this one and they will bring that forward to you at the, at the time of site plan. Uh, it's just about that, and he can speak to that if you'd like to, and ask, ask him some questions about that. Now, recommendation-wise, obviously, the, per, uh, state law, plat review is a ministerial function. It does meet all the technical requirements, uh, for the plat. The Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, is forwarding recommendation of approval, and staff is forwarding recommendation approval as well. With that, I'm available for any questions that you may have. And, uh, uh, Mr. Grant is here this evening as well to answer any questions you may have regarding the site.
Very well, thank you. At this time, counsel, do you have any questions for staff? If there are no question?
I, I have some questions.
Councilwoman Thurgood?
Um, okay, will this development, development be constructed in a single phase or multiple phases? What's the anticipated timeline for that?
Yeah, so this, this is two-phase develop, how they've called it out. And lot number one is the PNC Bank that they're proposing. That's the, that's the first, uh, project that's going to come forward. And then after that, the rest, the remainder of the lots will come in as Phase Two.
Is there a timeline? Like, do you know how long?
Uh, timeline, that probably the applicant can probably answer that. I know PNC Bank is being worked on at this time, so that will come forward to you, you know, when that comes in. As far as the remaining eight, eight lots, uh, the applicant should be able to answer that question for you.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing I, I, I would comment on is that the design appears functional, but somewhat utilitarian. Is, are there plans to ensure that it contributes positively to the city's visual character and sense of place in Heath?
So, uh, from a, from a zoning standpoint, um, this being, uh, that we went through an ordinance for a PD that would set this up, it's set up to meet the local, uh, the local retail density and dimensional requirements. And so that's how you see that set up in this manner. And a little bit different from the town center overlay, just where you can move, move some, move some things around. But in this one, this one meets all those technical requirements as far as the local retail, with the underlying zoning for the PD.
Well, I would hope that the finished product would be a little more creative.
Right. And, and you, you'll see some, some additional things when it comes forward for the site plan. That's where you'll actually, you know, see some landscaping, uh, in there, how the buildings are situated, uh, and as well as the tie-in of the, of the trail systems and so forth. So, um, and, and that's something, once again, that, that we'll see in, in very near future.
Yeah. So, I appreciate the mention on the traffic impact study. My, my biggest concern with this development is the impact right there by the high school.
Absolutely understood, yes.
That's all, thanks.
Very good. Uh, thank you. Any other questions for staff? At this time, we'll have the, um, and you're with Vaquero?
Yes.
Very well. You take the lectern, state your name. Appreciate it.
Hello, thank you, everyone, for your time. Grant Keller, uh, 2627 Tiller Street, Fort Worth, Texas. Just to kind of piggyback off what David said, you know, in our eyes, most of the design and all of the layout will come not during this stage, but during the site development and the CUP stage. And I know that there's a couple of comments back, uh, during the PD stage about the straight-line buildings and some more walkability and all of that. And that's, will be kind of taking that into consideration, um, when we're going through that kind of Phase One and Phase Two of the site plan and development stage to make it look, like you said, less utilitarian in terms of the straight line. Uh, but this is kind of just the functional initial, you know, plat from a lot-line layout. So, we hope to, we hope to have addressed more of the comments from a development perspective, kind of, when that time comes. And that's when we have the TIA, which has been, we have our initial draft received. We had to wait until, uh, school was kind of back in full session so we could get accurate counts, but that'll be ready for, um, kind of when we move forward to the next stage as well. And then from a timeline perspective, um, we've been working closely with PNC, um, kind of to work on the design. We are currently finalizing the lease with them. I believe they've met with city staff several times as well, um, but we're hoping to get through, you know, I would say over the next three to four months to get to the CUP and development stage. And then that's when we will kick off our full set of plans to, you know, apply for a permit, uh, to Heath and hopefully, you know, if all goes well, you know, break ground on Phase One and the, you know, Q3, Q4 timeline. Twenty-six.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions, counsel?
I got one question.
Councilman Myers?
I know you're saying you're going to develop Lot One. Are you going to go ahead and develop with no structure there on Lot Two as far as parking lot and all of that? Or are you just going to like, just kind of draw the line right there where Lot One would end?
Um, I guess in terms of, in terms of, in terms of like, infrastructure?
No, just, in other words, what's your plan on development? Because we both, all know that PNC is looking at going on Lot One. The way you've got this laid out, Lot One and Two are side by side.
Yes.
When you develop Lot One, are you going to go ahead and develop Lot Two with parking lot and all of that? Or are you going to wait?
Uh, we will most likely wait for most parking lot, but, uh, the goal would be to put in the, you know, I guess, if you want to call it the ring road, so you could circulate it, but the actual, you know, vertical improvements would not be, uh, in place. And we would wait to bring utilities to that pad, that building pad, because we would want to make sure that they're, you know, to the spec of the potential tenant and not have to do that twice.
And with the landscape drawings you got here, are you going to go ahead and landscape all of that across the front?
Um, yes, for the, of the front, yes. And then for, like, the PNC will have its, you know, its own, because its own specified lot, its own theoretical landscaping score, the way the ordinance is, you know, written. But we would do kind of Phase One and some of the infrastructure work all together, and then, you know, kind of all the vertical improvements will come as the tenants come later down the road.
Very good. Any other questions?
I guess, sir. I guess more of a comment, because when you did go through that PD, I think we were pretty united in the fact that we had something pretty interesting. And I realize that you don't get the cart before the horse, but just to want you to understand, we still feel that way very strongly. And I, I did notice in the treescape plan that, you know, a lot of that stuff will be blocked by some of those trees, so, you know, it'll be a little bit of obscuring. So when we get those renderings, that we could see some of that treescape, maybe with a little maturity on those trees with front elevations, that might help us sort of see what the end product will look like as well.
Perfect. I'll take a note of that. We can add, I mean, we can add, you know, kind of a, one without a treescape and one with, so you have a, you know, essentially a rendering showing just the building elevations itself, and then kind of sit back from a 3D perspective, from like a, you know, a drone footage?
Right.
With the rendered.
Again, just to understand, this is sort of a gateway into the reserve, and we really want it to have the same feel and look as that downtown overlay. And so just, just, you guys don't waste your time.
Yes. We've met with city staff several times and the Architecture Review Board already in regards to the, I would say, the architectural features in terms of the PNC. And then obviously, you know, they're kind of the first person here. And so that kind of design will kind of be the, once agreed upon, will be kind of the, I guess, idea for the rest of it, you know, as kind of the, to make sure, you said, you don't look, it looks like, you know, a coercive unit, not just nine individual buildings that, about all from different layouts and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, councilman? I would say that it may be ministerial to sit here tonight and look at a, look at a preliminary plat. If, you might want to stay up there for this one. It may, it may be ministerial to, to look at a preliminary plat, but I can tell you one thing that's not ministerial, and that is a site plan. And, and I am surprised, and I've seen a lot of people take this lecture, and I am surprised that even when you're sitting there going through your plat, I know that, hey, look, it's just, let's just get the plating down, and then we'll really put the pen to pad and get the designers working on our site plan. It's very dissatisfying to sit here tonight and literally see the same exact plan that I believe that this council made intimately clear, that we were really stretching pretty far and beyond kind of a normal course and a rezoning for this to be an opportunity for you guys to come back. And I would have thought that you guys would have planned a little bit more as partners of a new city that you're coming into in a, in a more assertive way. So I would encourage you that when you get to site planning, I'm telling you right now, that, that as the mayor, I will not support this. I believe that you've got major traffic concerns. We're putting a DPS station at the roundabout in the reserve. There are no cut-ins for turnouts. On the original piece, it was a, I think it was a five-foot sidewalk. Is it now a 10-foot trail? You don't have to answer that.
Yeah, that was per, you know, staff comment, yes.
Right. But the point, the point is, the point is, is that as you, as you're looking at this for site planning purposes, we've made it very, very clear on what the expectations are. That we are looking for walkability, we're looking for something very unique. So I would just encourage you, because I want you to have a great experience. But you guys had an opportunity, when you come with a preliminary plat, and I understand how it all works, and I understand, hey, we're just, we're just trying to get the preliminary plat done, and we'll work on the site plan, but I want to encourage you, right?
Yes, sir.
Hit a home run.
Yes, sir. And, no, we're, we're in working diligence, and I do want to, just one thing about the TIA, I know, it is, we did include the DPS station in our calculations from a traffic perspective. It includes not only these lots, but also that kind of proposed station in the rear, so that it should, will be factored into the calculations and the outcome, the recommendation of the TIA, that was addressed. But yeah, so we obviously have still.
But, but, but when you're doing the TIA, right, we're also talking about peak utilization.
Yes.
Right? If we get a call during, during school hours, when they're, when they're coming in or leaving, I want you to actually drive it. And I want you to look at a study.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I want you to drive it. I want Vaquero to take responsibility for, hey, when we've got to come out and we've got it, we've got to literally address life or death, we need to make sure that we've got a plan. And right now, it's a two-lane road. It may be to a width that feels like a, like a three or four-lane road, but it's not. It's two-lane road. And so we need to address how those turnouts are going to be for the ingress and egresses of, of this entire property.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And then we also need to really think about the residences and their family, their family being the children that go to school there. When you, when you're there and you stand on that property, as you will see that it's completely clean, thank you guys for finally cleaning up that property. If you will watch, when these high school students leave, they traverse across, they take the trail up, and they all want to go over to Tom Thumb, right? And/or the other restaurants. Well, we hope that that's the case for whoever your tenants are for this property. But we want you to make sure that you build it in a way that, that, that makes sense for that style of residence, right? Because we are a premier outdoor lifestyle community. We want walkability. We want outside amenities to be at the very core of what we're trying to create here. And so we changed the zoning, right, from ag to allow a PD for this commercial development. So again, I'm just, I'm just saying, traffic, safety number one, but amenitize your property so that site plan hits a home run.
Yes, sir.
Fair game?
Yes, sir.
Very well. All right. Any other questions, councilman? Thank you, sir. All right. If there are no other questions, the, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilman Ombe.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Vaquero addition, case number PP2025-02.
Okay, very well. There's a motion on the floor, as stated, for approval of a preliminary plat. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Mormon. Very well. Motion moves. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. All right, very well. It passes. That was me. Ministerial or not. All right, moving into 5.C., Discussion and Action Regarding Case Number FP202504, for the approval of a final plat for the 10 addition, containing 10 single-family residential lots, and being a 14.614 acre tract of land situated in the Antonio Rodriguez survey, abstract number 231, City of Heath, Rockwall County, Texas, and zoned for PDSF Plan Development District for SF43, single-family residential land uses located on the southeast side of South FM 549 and across from Bison Meadow Lane. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And now, you've seen this before from, from a zoning perspective as well as preliminary plat. And so now they're here for their final plat. That way they can start construction of the, of the site. And once again, as you've indicated, it's on the southeast side of South FM 549 and across from Bison Meadow Lane. Once again, this is the final plat that's being brought before you with 10, 10 lots, single-family lots. This does meet all the technical requirements of, of a, of a final plat. And, and once again, they provided a treescape plan here for approval as well. And on this particular plan, what you'll see is they've, they've removed a total of 340 inches, which are cedars, hackberries, and pecan. And in your, in your packet, you'll see they've color-coded these. That way you know which ones are being removed, what are staying, and, and what they're planting. And essentially, the outer, the outside of the, of the property will maintain the trees that were all along the, the property area. And then some of these were removed. The blue are those that are going to be removed, and, and these are going to be retained in here, because you've got the open space located here, and this is also an open space as well. Those that are being planted will be planted along the, the roadway here. And they are providing a 10-foot trail or walkway as well. The trail system that we have on our Trailmaster plan is located across the street. So there is an opportunity for those in the neighborhood to be able to go across and be able to take, take the trail system as well here. So with that, the, the amount of trees that they are planting does not satisfy the, the amount that was removed. And so they have a total of 99 inches that remain as far as mitigation is concerned. And so what they plan on doing is to plant those 99 inches. Essentially, those would be three trees per lot, if you calculate that out. And, and so those will come in at the time that the, that each lot is, is constructed. And so with that, that's how they will satisfy the mitigation. Park fees, this being 10 single-family lots, we do have a fee in lieu of land dedication as well as park development fees. As you see those listed out for each individual lot, that comes to $3,540.13 per lot for a total of $35,401.30. That will be due at the time of the filing, filing of the final plat. A traffic impact study is been, has been provided in your packet. That's something that was requested at the time of the, of the zoning. And, and so anyway, they provided the traffic study in your packet, and, and the traffic study essentially says that the turn lanes for the right and left do not meet the text-out requirements because of the amount, there's only 10 homes there essentially. And, and there's already a, a turn lane that is in between, I think it's Bison Meadow and, where is it? It, it crosses the property, so there is a turn lane there for folks to be able to turn into that particular location. Recommendation, once again, this is a ministerial function, and it does meet all the technical requirements of the Code of Ordinances. Planning and Zoning took a look at this as well and is forwarding recommendation of approval, and city staff recommends approval as well. With that, I'm available for any questions that you may have, and the applicants are here.
Very well. Counsel, at this time, do you have any questions for staff? No questions for staff. Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant? Very well. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, moving into, I'll, I'll open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat for case number FP-2025-04, for approval of the final plat for the 10 addition containing, oh, containing the 10 single-family residential lots.
Very well. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the, the final plat for case number FP202504. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilwoman Horn. All right, the motion moves. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. All right, at this time, we'll move into Agenda Item 5.D., Discussion Regarding an Update on the Construction of DPS Stations 30 and 31. Chief Siri.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, I have Bob here. He's an architect with AGCM to give us an update on Station 30 and 31. And then I'll go through some of the floor plans that we did, and then some photos of the Station 31 that were done on the previous project by the builder.
Very small. Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. This is a monthly report we are going to bring through the course of the completion of our design and construction. On this, we show a project health indicator, where we look at the budget, schedule, and quality. All are, basically, we're looking at the design where we are right now on the project. In the last, through, through October, we had concept plans of both Stations 30 and 31, we reviewed, and those were approved. And with the work that we have coming up, we'll continue the development of the plans. They're working on the site plans now currently. What you'll see tonight, tonight is the concept plans and the elevation, building elevations. The, in terms of the budget right now, what we're tracking, those are for 30 and 31, we're tracking those, those are design fees, and they're about approximately 40% to 50% complete right now. So the design will continue through the end of December into January, so, so we're tracking that. And then at that point, we'll have the guaranteed maximum price. The GMP will be developed, and we'll be bringing that to you at that time. We will, as we go through the course of the project, as we get into construction, of course, we'll bring construction quality, any change orders, any things that come up that impact our, our project. And kind of.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just to follow up to tentative completion date for 30 is early 2027, and for 30, 31 is end of '26. We'll have a meeting next week to go over IT and AV with all the, the vendors that we'll be using. This is a, it's smaller to see, but the floor plan for Station 30, it's approximately 24, just over 24,000 square feet. It's got a 45-person training room, and we really focused on a lot of things to design the floor plan, but, but comfortability for the officers, a place to be proud and professional to come to work at. And, and most importantly, we utilize the space as much as we can to make sure that we don't have to do this again, and it, and it gets us to our build-out. Elevations, I know y'all have seen this before. We did change a little bit on the front side, a, a kickout, and you'll see here in a second, that's for a stairwell on one side, and then a, a day room on the other side for the operational staff. Some of the interior photos, this is a, a 3D rendering of the lobby. There'll be some more features. They're looking at some cedars and things like that to put in there. And then there's a photo of the training room with stadium seating in it. This is the approved floor plan for Station 31. And if you recall, this is one that we took that the builder had already done to try to save us some time and money. We just moved around some of the floor plan. It's just over 9,000 square feet at that location. This is the conceptual elevation of that building, and then coming into this, I'll have some photos, just so y'all can see what it'll look like, because they've already built this building before. That's, that's the exterior of, of 31. Rearview of the building, kitchen area. Office space within the station. This is the Bay Area of 31. Workout facility. Dorm rooms. And that's all, that's all I have for tonight. I appreciate your time very much and your support that you give our department.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, chief. I know that this can't come soon enough. You guys are crammed.
Yes, sir.
On top of each other in, in your current space, and so we're very much looking forward to this. So thanks for running through that, and thank you, sir, for working hard on this. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for the chief? Councilwoman?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under the project health indicator, it indicates the, the health of the project poor, at-risk, average, good, excellent. Is there a reason why it's labeled good and not excellent? We're overachievers in Heath.
I thought the same thing.
So I'm very curious about that.
Well, we, we are excellent in terms of the concept design. We have, the plans are being developed, so that's why they're classified as good at the moment. They will get to excellent. And then as we go through construction, we, we want to be able to identify anything that, you know, stands out, that we know that you need to be aware of, anything that's not good. So, but yeah, the goal is that everything will be excellent, so we work towards that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I will comment. It's very encouraging to see early on the collaboration with staff in AGCM, because your projects of this size with schedule and staying in a budget, it, it just reflects that you guys are collaborating. That's, that's refreshing. This is a long-term investment. It's critical for our community, and, and I couldn't be more excited about it. So thank you for, for sharing that information.
Well, thank you.
Very good. I'll look forward to watching the chief cry whenever they open.
I probably will.
I know you will. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. All right. At this time, we will move into the next agenda item. So I'll, so I'll read the agenda item. However, I believe I'm going to, I'm going to take us into an executive session, just because this is a change order, but Hubbard Drive is an elongated process, many years. I want to make sure that we, that we, we have some conversations with our legal counsel. So at this time, we will move into executive session at 7:59, in accordance with the In accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the City of Heath, the council will recess into executive session. This is a closed meeting to discuss the following. 551.071, consultation with the attorney on a matter on which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding discussion in action to, and we will not take action in executive session, but to authorize the city manager and discuss the, discuss this, the road improvements on Hubbard Drive. We're now in executive session.